Do you have a curl up by your tints?
Hello.
Hello, Carla. Do you hear us okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Certainly can.
Great.
You're trying. We definitely minimized like when I was away with the one camera setup.
Please rise for the pleasure allegiance be led by Gina Verosy. Welcome to the Village of Balsa Spa trustee, board trustees meeting for February 26, 2024. Second normal meeting for February, though, what the fourth overall, I think. Let us go directly to minutes here and can I get a motion that the minutes of February 12, 2024 be approved? Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Baskin, I'll go to discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can you get a motion that the minutes of the February 19, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fandanza. Let's get a second then and we'll go to that point. Yeah, trustee Price Bush, discussion. Go ahead.
Under motion for A and B, it says. I'm losing my place. The public hearing for the regular meeting at the Board of Trustees kind of 19th.
Unfortunately, two things happened there that it's accurate as written because there was an error on that sheet and we need to make changes anyway. So that's why it's not tonight. So it actually is reflected correctly on there. And then we will go to a vote, I guess. All in favor?
I don't understand because didn't you make, you didn't make a motion for a public hearing for tonight?
It is correct as written. It was actually done all that it did not. So either way.
That's how the agenda was written, but that wasn't part of the meeting.
Correct. You weren't at it. So I'm not sure if you can even vote on it at this point.
No, I'm not gonna.
All in favor? Opposed? Should probably should have stayed right. You weren't at that one. Nineteenth, the 19th.
Oh, that one.
Yeah. You can do what you want, but just.
You're right. I forgot.
Another situation, you leave the minute, you can vote on that.
Yeah, I better be safe than sorry, I think is the opinion generally on those. Go ahead, Carla.
I was gonna say you can vote on minutes, even if you were not at the meeting, as long as you have reviewed the minutes. I know it's counterintuitive, but.
Just roll that bus right on over you.
We don't want to make a change.
It's three zero two. No, it's correct as written. So.
So what happened is that because it's reflecting accurately. You can't post correctly or anything.
Right. I'm just surprised at the meeting. Nobody, I guess nobody did. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, no presentations tonight. Let's go to public comment on agenda items only. Three minutes per speaker. For those on Zoom that want to speak about an agenda item, now's a good time to put your hand up on Zoom and we'll give you some time to do that if we have anybody in the house that has a discussion point. And I see Liz's hands, so we'll go with her. Liz might need to turn that on. Make sure it blows red up top there. There you go.
Liz Cormos, 89, hi. Okay, a few issues. One thing I've noticed on the agenda. At the first part, under the consent agenda, there are amounts for, for these motions. Twenty four thousand eight forty five, et cetera, et cetera. But later on, on in the agenda, there, there are no dollar amounts and you're voting on expenditures. And I know those expenditures are detailed in the attachments, but I don't think you should have to go into the attachments to find out how much, how much money the board is, you know, electing to, to spend. So, you know, motions such as, is, is. C, D. H, I, K had no dollar amounts and. You know, those, those motions deal with dollar amounts. And I also think it would be. Recommended that when you put in a dollar amount, whether you put some sort of indication, if it's an expenditure, if that, that is within the budget. So to distinguish if a certain expenditure wasn't budgeted for would give residents a indication. Specifically, I'd like to comment on H, I, and K. I felt that the amount that Milton is giving is. Basically, you know, doesn't even cover inflation increases. And I'd like to know why there wasn't, you know, more. Request from them to, to raise those amounts. You know, I think for the library, they added a thousand dollars. And, and you know, the library has a major capital campaign. Are they going to be contributing to that capital camp campaign? Their residents use the library. You know, the, the amount of the pool. The, the, you know. Was the other one, the attached agreement for the events, there was no. In the attachments, there wasn't even any dollars. I don't know if that page was missing, but it didn't have anything. It just said, you know, they're going to do something for events, but how much are they going to get? So I really think the agenda should.
Ten seconds, Liz.
Should reflect more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Carolyn Stevenson, 45, West High Street. Just one thing that I noticed on the village webpage was that a statement that I made at a prior. Village Board meeting was inadvertently attached to meeting minutes for a later date. So just as a point of reference, whoever's mixing and matching those up. As you read the meeting minutes for February 12th, my statement, which I made during that meeting, is attached to meeting minutes. You know, a week later. I just want to mention a few things. I, you know, third village board meeting I've been to in a week here. And I guess there's still some confusion about the public hearings. I thought they were going to be tonight, but now they are pushed forward to March. And I think it's important, maybe I'm missing something. I don't see the draft language for the proposed laws anyplace on the village website for proposed laws one and two. And I think it's really incumbent on all the trustees to be very transparent about this and get those types of proposed changes out on the village webpage way in advance. There's in the last week or so, there's been so much last minute information sharing that happens shortly before a meeting is called. I would just say. You know, it, it's helpful if somebody could get that onto the website by tomorrow so that we can see what those multiple changes have been. I also see that Wiswol Park Master Plan is on the agenda. I was not able to attend the public viewing of whatever was available due to the weather event. And that had happened back in January. Could the Wiswol Park Master Plan at least be posted online or available as a hard copy in the village office? I think it's important that those types of things be available to the public. And it shouldn't just be a one-shot deal where we, you know, can get to the library and if we can, that's it. The final thing would be a question about the budget workshops. If somebody could tell me when they are scheduled, we want to make sure that. You know, the public is informed about when those are being scheduled for the coming village fiscal year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no hands in the house, no hands in, so excuse me, there's a hand in the house. I've seen his work. You're good? I had to push come over and consider that you guys want to put a, what you call in the center there. A, the alley in the center.
Hi, Ray out in 16 middle work end. Two points pertaining to the sidewalks that are on the agenda. I realize it's just for setting a thing, but. I'm a little concerned from the meeting that was held last week, was it?
Last week's meeting has nothing to do technically with the actual public hearing that's going to occur or the public hearing is going to be occurring in two weeks and we vote on it, just to keep it clear here because I sense confusion. So we'll get out of this. That is only on the reimbursement level.
The public. Well, that's basically what I have to go for then. All right.
Yep.
I'm concerned about having different reimbursement rates for new versus repairs. Most of those who do not have sidewalks chose not to put them in when their homes were built. Now the village or mainly Ben was saying we should, you know, I'd be okay with giving a hundred percent of the cost. So we're going to reward those people who didn't put sidewalks in when they built their homes for not putting them in, yet the people who need to repair them are only going to get a 50% reimbursement. I think we need to emphasize equality. We're talking about equality for everybody. We want to go 50% for everybody. Great. I think it's, you call the company, they don't care if they're putting in a new one or if they're repairing it old and they're still going to charge it the same. The other thing is by installing a sidewalk where the homeowner doesn't want one. You are then saddling that person with ongoing maintenance that they may not be able to perform for themselves. Okay, if I didn't have a sidewalk in front of my house and you came by and said, you gotta have a sidewalk there. Good. How do I get out and shovel that sidewalk? How do I maintain that sidewalk? I can't afford it because I'm on a fixed income. How do I do that? What are we going to do for our senior citizens and, and those of us that have some disabilities? How are we going to handle those issues? Going forward. It's just not fair to punish those people. And most of the sidewalks that need repairs in this village aren't new sidewalks from new houses. They're the older homes that have been there for 40, 50, 100 years. They're the ones that need the new sidewalks to be repaired.
Thank you. Just to get out of a trend too, remember the only thing on the agenda for tonight technically is reimbursement level in public hearing. So if you want to discuss other aspects of sidewalks, you're more than welcome to the second public comment session later on in the meeting. Anybody else? Seeing nobody. We are going to end public comment. Consent agenda, we need to remove number four. The SBK is going to give us additional invoicing to make sure it's reflecting the full 10-5. And so I, I'm going to ask if there are any other consent agenda motions that need to be removed. One, two, three, or five in this case. Hearing, nothing from this table. Can I get a motion to approve the items one, two, three, and five on the following consent agenda? Trustee Fandanza.
One second.
I'll give it to trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I got a motion to set a public hearing for proposed local law number one of 2024 to add section 150 Parks to the village code for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on March 11th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Yeah, we, correct days there.
One thing that would be helpful is to get the, the version of the law that we're going to be voting on tonight earlier.
You would have in your mailbox from this afternoon. You probably may not have seen it.
Yeah, no, I know, but that's late and that's hard for us to catch up. There's about, you know, 15 emails in the afternoon with village business tonight. And so if there's any way to get us these versions earlier, that would give us an opportunity to read them and then potentially, you know, comment on and provide feedback before the board.
The only change as discussed on Thursday, I think that the special meeting was the addition of basically the application to the SLA being made available to the clerk for the five days after filing of the SLA permit application so that we can see the confinement area, et cetera. And so that was capitalized by a change from Carla that was sent around today.
If I could, just for member of the public, yeah, the email that was sent today did have just that one change to it. And Ben, I had, I actually took that and put it in the email to all of you today. That's the only change from the two weeks ago. After we made the changes from two weeks ago and I submitted that back earlier last week. The sole change for tonight is that one, that one line. Everything else stayed the same that you guys had about a week ago.
In honor of respect for substantive change possibilities, we again, with date wrong anyway. We punted to March 11th to make sure we could get this done ultimately correctly. So that's the only change. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to set a public hearing for proposed local law number two, 2024 to amend section 174 dash two and section 174 dash 20D in chapter 174 Streets and Sidewalks for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on March 11th, 2024 at 7:05 PM. Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Raymond, discussion.
So here just procedural question. So motions were made at the special meeting. Or in a public hearing, do we have to do anything with those motions, like undo them? Or we're just ignoring them?
No. If I may, if you mean the motion, the seeker motion?
Well, the motion to, for the date of the public hearing that back with the special meeting last Monday.
Well, it's rendered impossible because the dates were the same dates as the. You know, the meeting by accident. So.
And there's, so there's nothing we need to do now.
Nope. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Would you like that I get to yell at you across this? Just for the public again, the, this, you know, sidewalk law, the only thing this does is it is 174-2 is the reimbursement for sidewalks itself and 174-20B is reimbursement for curbing. Trustee Price Bush smartly found that that needed to be consistent with 174-2, so I thank her for that. And so what we did was we just put those two in there and all it says, and the board does have this and it will be on the website. It's required only five days beforehand, as many of you know. But the board has consistently tried to get it out more than five days before the public hearing. So all that does is say that any reimbursement will be provided. You know, the, the board has the right to decide that per resolution, so we don't have to go in and keep changing the law for both sidewalks and for the curbing. It does not set a reimbursement amount. You have to have the law in place and then you can set your fee schedule.
Just to be clear, what will happen is an approval of that law, hopefully ultimately on perhaps the 11th. Then the state has to accept it. Then we will set the schedule at a subsequent meeting after the state accepts it. So just because we approve it on the 11th does not mean the reimbursement rate is up to 50%. If that's what we deem to be eventually the correct number, you'll still have to wait for a little while longer. That's why we're trying to get this thing done in time for springtime for everybody's sake that needs a reimbursement.
Correct.
Wants to redo their sidewalk.
And we'll have to keep a special eye on what complications this might make with the law. Just over a year ago, we suggested this approach where we just changed the schedule and we're advised that it could lead to issues with other parts of the law. So. We'll just have, so we'll just, I, I support this approach, but. It was, we were advised to be careful doing this and actually to not do it without doing the whole law. So we'll just have to see, get to the schedule, how whatever's in the schedule feeds back into the law.
Can I get a motion approving the attached proposal by La Bella Associates relating to the retaining wall and vault work at 66 Front Street Village offices and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
What's the dollar amount for their work?
It's in the attachments.
This is an example where it would be good to have this in the motion itself. And as we've discussed.
Or it might be a good exercise to actually force us to actually go into the attachments to read them.
We have read the attachments, but it's good for transparency and for the public.
Some 4,200 plus, some 3,800. So and then 20,000 time materials fees, $28,000. That last one is construction base services, $20,000, so $8,000, the one married 20,000 after.
This is a based on proposal that they sent back in October 2023?
Yeah, I thought we had approved it. They say we did not and I couldn't find a minute. So we're just making sure we got this actually approved. So they move forward with it.
I was wondering. That's what some of us doing this now.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the resolution related to awarding the John Street Tower bid to USG Water. Carla, I'm going to read the resolution that is in here, correct?
Yeah, the only thing you have to change, yes, sorry, the only thing you have to change is the, instead of saying month and day, say today, and Terry, obviously you have the one where that your name is spelled properly. So that wasn't made, by the way.
I will need a motion after reading the following. At a regular meeting of the Village of Balsa Spa Board of Trustees held on February 26, 2024. The found resolution was made by and was subsequently seconded by. Whereas bids for John Street Tank Rehabilitation were received on February 5th, 2024. And whereas Consulting Engineers, La Birch Engineering Consulting Group Limited has submitted their report relative to their analysis of bids. And whereas the New York State DOH approval of plans has not yet been, been obtained. I actually should correct that too. We're going to put this in. The DOH approval has been obtained as of today, actually, it's supported by email. So we'll make that change as well to this. Whereas the New York State Department of Health approval of plans has been obtained. Now therefore be it resolved that the recommendation of said engineers be hereby accepted, approved, and adopted and be it further resolved that John Street Tank Rehabilitation be hereby awarded for total amount of base bid less deductible alternative number one in the amount of $1,02,760. One million, 102, 101,2760.00 to USG Water, 1230 Peachtree Street Northeast. Suite 100, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309. And be it further resolved that the award and contract are contingent upon the village and contractor executing a change order concurrently with the execution of the construction agreement. Said change order shall preserve the village's option to add the communications corral and the annual inspection and maintenance costs to the contract of the price, prices bid. If exercised within six months of the contract date, we will strike the last sentence about DOH. Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Let's do a roll call on this one.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yeah.
Trustee Price?
Yes.
And Mayor Ross?
Yes. Thank you. Carla, how do you want to hand a resolution related to naming the village's lead agency for secret review for the Wood Sala project?
Quickly. Um, a, as the board is aware, you know, we're moving forward with the alienation process. We've been speaking directly with the state senator and assembly person, which we need to. The next step in this is to do seeker. And so what we've done is you have before you the part one of the EAF for this type one action. We're working with DEC on this as well as with the town and the town's engineer to move forward with this. What you have before you is the EAF with all the information. All you're doing tonight is accepting the EAF. And part one of the EAF and declaring the village board of trustees as lead agency for this type one action. What you're doing then, what we would do then is tomorrow, we have letters ready to go to all the interested and involved agencies, including the town. For the coordinated review under seeker, we've already spoken with the county as well. They're aware of what's going on and they're going to turn around and get a, give us a letter ASAP. That's not county planning. We don't have to go to them. This is just the county as an interested agency. So we have that ready to go. The first step is this. And then assuming we hear back from everyone by the next meeting, it could very well be that at the next meeting, the board goes through parts two and three to determine the environmental impact of the alienation. So tonight, what you have for you, I just want to see if you've gone through the EAF and you're just declaring yourselves lead agency. And then we go through the actual environmental review in parts two and parts three at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter.
Shall I read?
If you so desire.
Resolution to clearing intent to be lead agency for seeker at the regular meeting of the Village of Balsa Spa Board of Trustees held on February 26, 2024. The following resolution was made by and was subsequently seconded by. Whereas the Board of Trustees here and after referred to as the Board has reviewed the seeker full environmental assessment form EAF part one on the transfer of Wood Sala Nature Preserve from the Village of Balsa Spa to the Town of Milton here and after referred to as the action. And whereas the Board determines that said action is classified as a type one action under the state environmental quality review seeker regulations. And whereas the Board determines that said action is also subject to review and approval by other involved agencies under seeker regulations. And whereas Board determines that it is the most appropriate agency to ensure the coordination of this action will provide written notifications to involved agencies for the purpose of conducting a coordinator review and making a determination of significance. They're on, they're on, under the seeker regulations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board here does hereby declare its intent to be designated as lead agency for the action. Be it further resolved that the village clerk and attorney for the village are directed to provide notice hereof to the involved and interested agency. Be it further resolved that the village clerk and attorney for the village are directed to provide notice hereof to the involved and interested agencies. Trustee Fundanza. We will correct your name. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
This, this is another example where, you know, this is sent at two forty four today and I I work full time and um, it makes it extremely difficult for me to read this and make an informed vote. Um, when it comes Monday afternoon, and if there's any way. You know, this, I I think this could have done, been done months ago, but if there's any way to do it at least Friday. Um, to get it to us, and we have this weekend. Um, to review these documents, uh, multiple documents, that some of multi-page documents, that would be much appreciated.
And I absolutely will attempt to do that when I'm not sick next time.
All right, you are sick, that's true.
Trustee Baskin?
Uh, yeah, so, yes.
Trustee Van Danza?
Yeah.
Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Carla, I. I don't believe the engagement letter leader did it, I'm trying to remember here.
For what?
Uh, Larry, if bond counsel?
You have the engagement letter.
Do you have it in there? Thank you, okay.
Yeah, it was in the same email that Tracy sent out.
Thank you. Can I get a motion approving engagement of Bartlett County Stewart Rhodes P C at Bond Counsel related to the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street Balls is fine, New York, and authorizing the mayor to execute the attached retention agreement? Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next up is a resolution related to bond authority related to the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street, Carly, you want to take that as I get that open?
I can take this, this is something that has been discussed in the past, um, and just uh, came up really on Friday afternoon. Um, that the purchase of of seventy eight Thompson Street is going to be uh, probably closed in the next month. I would assume, um, or less, and the village has always intended on paying for it out of the fund. Um, and that's, you know, I love village funds, um, but has always intended to work with USDA in an attempt to obtain financing. Um, as of Friday afternoon, um, we were tasked with preparing the bond authorization documents. All that does, um, and we've done bond authorizations for you folks before, all it does is say that the uh, village of Boston Spa has the authority to bond up to four hundred and sixty, I think it's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars over fifteen years. Um, this is not saying that the village of Boston Spa is not purchasing the property, is not closing on the property, it's just to finance the the closing funds afterwards. Um, it is subject to a permissive referendum, which is a petition on this motion, and in the event that the, there is a enough folks submit a valid petition within thirty days. And a vote is taken to take, uh, to have the village not bond this out, that does not stop the purchase, the purchase will have already happened, it just stops any financing of it, so the village will have paid for it with the village cash. And so what you have before you is the bonding resolution, uh, that resolution authorizes you to bond the funds thirty days for a permissive referendum, and then there is a twenty day estoppel period um, where there is twenty additional days where folks can come and say that the village doesn't have the constitutional authority to bond, which of course it does. Um, so really, this is just for USDA financing purposes to tie up some more loose ends for USDA. Um, and I know that the mayor and Chris Huntsinger from USDA have had conversations about this, and my partner Larry, who does the bond work have had conversations about this, um, even over the weekend and has worked with Joel Inara with respect to um, the property as well. So what, that's basically in a nutshell what's going on and why you are getting it at this late time.
The amount of the purchases four fifty, four fifty thousand dollars, here's ten thousand dollars of soft cost accounted for over and above that, such as legal and architectural slash engineering as well, just to be uh, fully transparent as to why the number is not four fifty in this. Um, the serial brown, serial bond resolution dated February twenty six, twenty twenty four, resolution authorizing the issuance of four to sixty thousand dollars serial bonds of of the village of also spots, Saratoga County, New York, for the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street also spot in New York. Whereas on February twenty six, twenty twenty four, the Board of Trustees of the village of all spots desires to authorize financing the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street also spot in New York at a maximum cost of four to sixty thousand dollars, or so much thereof as may be necessary to be paid from the proceeds of the obligations issued pursuant to the local finance law, now therefore be resolved. The Board of Trustees, one, the Board of Trustees, the village of all sponsors, County, New York, hereby authorizes the financing of the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street also spot in New York and across not to exceed four to sixty thousand dollars, including related professional fees. Two, the specific object or purpose for which uh, the obligations are to be issued pursuant to this resolution is for the financing of the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street also spot in New York, including related professional fees. Three, the current maximum cost of the aforesaid specific object of or purpose of this resolution is four to sixty thousand dollars. And the plan for find the financing thereof is to issue serial bonds of said village pursuant to the local finance law for the amount of the purchase of seventy eight Thompson Street also spot in New York and related professional fees. Such bonds are to be payable from amounts from which shall annually be levied uh, on all the taxable real property in said village in the faith and credit of said village of all spots, Saratoga County, New York, or hereby pledged for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon. Four, is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforesaid uh, specific object or purpose of this resolution is fifteen years pursuant to subdivision eleven C of paragraph A of section eleven point zero zero of the local finance law. Five, subject to the provision of local finance law, will the power to authorize the issuance of and sell uh, bonds and bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance and sale of the serial bonds herein authorized, including renewals of such notes, is hereby delegated to the mayor of the village of also spa, chief fiscal officer, or in his absence, village clerk, who is the substituted financial officer. Such bonds or notes shall be of such terms, form and content, and shall be sold in such manner as may be determined by said mayor or village clerk pursuant to and consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Six, this resolution is adopted, subject to a permissive referendum pursuant to section thirty six, the local finance law and article nine of the village law of the state of New York. Seven, validity of such bonds by anticipation notes may be contested only if A, such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which said Board of Trustees is not authorized to spend money, or B, the provisions of law, which should be complied with as of the date of publication of this resolution are not substantially complied with in an action suit or proceeding, and set contesting such validity is commenced within twenty days after the date of such publication, or C, such obligations are authorized violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Finally, eight, this resolution with the applicable notice shall be published in full within ten days after its adoption in the Schneidling Daily Gazette, the official newspaper for the village for such purpose. The resolution shall take effect thirty days after its adoption and thereafter shall be published in full in the official newspaper of the village together with a notice of the village clerk substantially in the form provided in section eighty one point zero zero of the local finance law. Trustee Fundanza.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
Is is there any chance that resolution is changing? Or is that what you just read, changing, it says resolution pending, that, that's, but that is.
No, that's the resolution, it was pending as of Friday because it wasn't done on Friday afternoon.
All right, thanks.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Baskin?
Yeah.
Trustee Van Danza?
Yeah.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Okay, uh, moving along here. Got to get a motion, uh, approving the attached agreement between the village of all spots and town of Milton related to the village library and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Uh, there was a page that was missing and was submitted to all trustees today, uh, once we were able to locate that missing page. Uh, the number was four thousand dollars, uh, there is a change that needs to be made to the agreement, though, to change the wording on page two related to events to including but not limited to, since there are some events that may not occur and that the intent of this agreement is not to pin the uh, village to specific events, and that's been made known by the town of Milton as well, that essentially it's such as, it's not a definitive list of events that is in that contract. So can I get a motion approving the attached agreement with correction, uh, just mentioned by mayor between the village of also spa and the town of Milton related to the village events and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
So. This, I mean, this is not a big deal, it's nice that they're giving us some funds for events. You know, typically a contract includes uh, specifically what will be delivered in return for those funds, and we have here listed in the contract Easter egg hunt at Chinese Center, which is great, we have falling leaves festival, we have the birdhouse program and holiday program, so. It's my understanding the birdhouse program is not happening. And I'm not sure what the holiday program is uh, this year, other than the parade.
Breakfast with Santa, it's my recollection.
What it is?
Yeah. So I talked to Carla about this earlier, Carla, we comfortable with that change of including but not limited to?
Uh, yeah, if you, you know, and I think Ben, you were the one that brought this up over the weekend, so thank you for that, um, that uh, the language in the bottom part of it, not the whereas is, because that's not that important, but the bottom part of it. Um, I changed that best I could on the PDF con, uh, copy, and I sent that to you folks, uh, this afternoon that we take uh, that part to say, including but not limited to those programs, which allows us to do any, any of those programs, I mean, you could do a different birdhouse program, I suppose. Um, but it could be any of those closed programs, but it's not limited to those programs, but it doesn't require you to do those programs, I did, I talked to the mayor about that I didn't like, I wasn't thrilled with the language, maybe next year what we need to do is kind of go through these legacy contracts and um, update them a little, the town of Milton uh, prepares them and sends them over to us, my understanding. So uh, with those, though, Ben, I think we're okay, I I'm not too concerned about the village coming, or the town coming back and saying, you need to do the birdhouse program, that's not what the contract says.
I mean, it literally says including but not limited to, but I, I understand, uh, we have a friendly relationship with Milton, so I'm sure sure they'll be flexible if we don't do.
Well, the the legal import of the phrase including but not limited to means that you are not exclusively in the list that's in the contract, that it can be beyond the list that's listed, as long as we're utilizing it for events is again what the import is here.
No, I understand, but the English grammar says including, so. But not limited to, right, so including means it includes, and then it could be something else, but it includes the birdhouse festival right now. But it's, you know, I just, this is why I I was asking about this, if there is some intention to birdhouse program, that would be news to us. Because my understanding is we're not doing the birdhouse program, right?
I, I'm not the events committee, and so who knows?
Good that Carla is, it's comfortable with it, and um, you know, I think we can continue forward.
I don't know if there's a, you can share information later, I'd be interested in what you have to say, but that's fine, I'm fine with this, it's not like we're giving them money, but we're getting one.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, can I get a motion approving the attached agreement between the village of all spots and town of Milton related to the village swimming pool, authorizing the mayor to execute same. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Mayor, you're going to include that one change from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four?
Correct, uh, so we.
Towards the bottom.
Change to change to twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, do you accept that in a second? Okay, sorry about that, thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, I have one additional motion concerning uh, John Street Tower and other business. Uh, we'll place it there, and I will warn uh, everybody before public comment with that maybe just out of fairness, so that we don't have to drag out that as well. There's announcements, you can see we've been pretty darn busy here with the uh, different substantive motions that we had to go through here. I kind of, a lot of things coming to head at once, and so that's been our focus, I was away, as you know, for about nine days. Thank you to trustee Bernadette, uh, serving as deputy mayor and leading up a couple meetings in my absence, did a wonderful job. And uh, thanks to everybody in the village staff for uh, not uh, hitting me up too many times, uh, my time away, but we're still doing the village's business uh, even from afar, so uh, rest assured, and uh, tomorrow I'll be discussing uh, with the regular advisory board uh, some of the insights we've gotten about water towers in general in rectifying past errors uh, in our ways and making sure those errors don't happen again over the next thirty years especially. So that they can make some determinations on the future of water rates, especially in in outside the village. Treasure is important, add uh, up on my screen, and then I unsmarly uh, went past that, so let me get that back up here. It's for that. Here it is, uh, Saratoga County sales tax distribution for February for the village was a hundred, three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. It is, which is five thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars less than it was in February twenty twenty three. Uh, overall for the county, uh, sales tax, uh, numbers were thirteen million, eight, forty one, five, twenty one, or point seven nine percent more than thirteen point seven million dollars received in February of last year. Uh, Saratoga County is currently ranked sixth for twenty twenty three sales tax uh, collection growth out of the sixty two counties, so the interesting tidbit about our fast growing county. Budget preparation is underway and budget request forms have been sent to the nonprofits and to departments as well, I could say. Uh, the budget analysis worksheets are complete but are being reviewed for uh, this year to date actuals, they will be sent out very soon. Uh, budget meetings will be set up in the very near future, and the flow of utility payments has been good, and we have been able to put, uh, input them into events quickly, a reminder that the bills are due in the village office till later than the close of business on March fourth, twenty twenty four, to avoid penalties. Let's go to uh, liaison reports here, and we'll start with Sean.
Okay, so.
Grab your microphone, Ken.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
So, um. Uh, DPW has been pretty busy, they've completed uh, the Polly Hills Greenfield dab entrance and stumps and shrubs have been removed and final grading. Um, will be done probably in the spring with some topsoil and seeding, and two-way radios were installed in the two new Chevy trucks. Uh, all dump truck frames and boxes of plow frames have been painted. They got their harassment and discrimination training done, good, and uh, emergency water dig done on Thursday, two fifteen at Pleasant and Eastern. Uh, had a little bit of snow to plow on the sixteenth. And started to to rebuild water main tapping machine. Um, to do upcoming is take uh, school play planners down, stop sign, inspection and replacement, rebuild safety barricades, patch repair the roof, the whole street water building. Continue on the EPA Water Service Report. And install a kill switch in truck number eight, this is one of the tandems, and is the last truck they have to do. And start measuring streets and calculating quantities for the summer paving lifts.
Make sure that uh, the CHIPS funding stays at where it is, or it goes up, uh, that will help us immensely, uh, in that situation, trustee price push.
Um, the library, if if you look at the website, they've got a lot going on. Um, they're offering or A A R P is offering free tax prep open to all ages and tax brackets. And that's every Friday until April twelfth, so you can either call or stop in and make an appointment. And also Dan Levine, a local book expert, will be offering free book appraisals on Thursday, March seventh at six thirty P M at the library.
Everyone will just have to bear in mind, having a cold, I don't have a bunch of free, and I left my phone at home with my notes. Um, uh, the V S B P A is usual, is is busy preparing for the summer season, they're sorting out movies and also the concert schedule. Um, they are also preparing March eighteenth, just a reminder to everyone, is their annual meeting, I encourage this board to attend. Um, they're going to be opening the registration this week, I believe, on their website. Um, but they're plugging along, they're, they're also building our, their board, and um, I'll have better notes next time when it's in front of me. Uh, but uh, it. I'll delete that, I apologize, everyone. I was going to say talk about arts, but you have it in front of me, I'll let you do that.
And go ahead.
Uh, the committee on the arts, um, met February seventh, and they nationally elected co-chairs Ashley Bush and Emily Bartel. Congratulations to them, and they're great, they're doing a great job. Um, the C O A Committee on the Arts is working on uh, street banners and um, garbage can size of V S B P A. Um, they're working on a social media calendar, um, one of the big things they're doing is something called, and they're planning right now, is called Random Acts of Poetry. And and that's in April of twenty twenty four, they're going to have a workshop on four thirteen, an open mic night, and four seventeen. Uh, again, involving um, uh, the uh, historical society and um, the some other businesses as well, um, they're going to have a professional reading on four twenty seven. And all these things you can find on the C O A Facebook page. So that is something they are putting to. So that is something they are putting together and encourage everyone, poetry lovers and would be poetry lovers to uh, engage with. They're gonna do tie dye with the SVP A may, in May. Um, and they're waiting on a bunch of um, Saratoga Arts grants. Um, so they'll see um, if we can repeat the sounds of summer and winter again, and other things that they're uh, they're hoping for. Um, the other piece uh, they're working on is a partnership with the schools to uh, have some art exhibitions in different area businesses. So uh, that's. Yeah, the FBP A in the schools, yeah. Um, and their next meeting is March sixth, first Wednesday and third Wednesday each month seven PM in the library.
Okay, uh, now, uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Cut you off.
Um, this, uh, just uh, about the park and tree board.
Okay, go for it. Sorry.
All right, Caitlin writes up notes for me to read, which is, that's appreciated.
Just go by.
Um, all right, this is from Caitlin Parwana, the chair of the Park and Tree Board. Um, first, the Park and Tree Board has been planning this year's Arbor Day celebration. They are planning a tree planting of one or two trees in Kelly Park at ten AM. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, uh, pending bill approval, which we just did. Uh, there'll be a tree planting demonstration along with educational talks about proper tree planting, care and maintenance. Should the weather be nice, then they also work to organize a street tree walk during which residents can learn about tree identification, proper street plantings. By looking at examples and discussing the benefits of treats. Trees for planting will be donated and at no cost is up. The Park and Tree Board has also recently received an updated draft of the Whizwell Park Master Plan. They've been working on Studio A Landscape Architecture and Engineering. After receiving, discussing the first dress, they reached out and received feedback from the SVP A, including business owners, folks who organize events in the park, farmers market organizers and vendors. From there, they took the common elements of feedback and had the landscape architect create this updated test. We'll get into that in a minute. Um, their hope is to present this updated draft to those board and public so to receive further feedback to be considered. And that is from Caitlin Parwana.
Uh, impromptu here, but I, ray out of fairness, uh, last time you used part of your, uh, public comment time for events purposes. I know you're with the events committee. Does the events committee have any uh, information they want to share that won't count against your time?
Um, the next event we got coming up is on March twenty-third. Yes, you did. All right, March twenty-third, uh, it's going to be the Easter egg hunt, which uh, will be from eleven till one. Um, and we would love to see as many folks from the village as possible. We know we always get a bunch from uh, town Milton to come. Uh, we're stuffing four thousand eggs or maybe a few more. So when, when are we setting that up? As I said, when we get the eggs, we're gonna be stuffing eggs with candy and all sorts of stuff. So we will let you know when that happens. Um, and one of the things I wanted to talk about with the events and Ben, you mentioned that, you know, it was including but not limited to. The events change. They can change every year. We may not be doing the Falling Leaves Festival this year, but we may have something during the summer. Um, I would love to do a sleigh ride down the hills this year. Don't look like it's gonna happen. So we sort of, some of it's weather related, some of it's, you know, funding, some of it's new ideas, old ideas, traditions. So it is sort of flex and flow, you know, we're trying not to just have the same events every year, but we're trying to get the most bang for our buck, I guess. It's just, you know, what events are the best? You know, family fun day isn't given, but what else draws a bunch of people and gives back to the community the most? So that's why that's gonna flex and any money we're getting from uh, the town, uh, I would love to see Boston throw in some money too, you know? Um, because there are quite a few residents from Boston that uh, attend our events. That's what we got for now. Um, Birdhouse Festival may not look the same this year, may not be called Birdhouse Festival. It could be something else. Um, but there will be some sort of a spring event this year.
Thank you, Rick. The old business listed, new business Whizwell Park uh, draft master plan. Uh, so as, as Bennett alludes to, we received uh, this weekend, uh, colorized version of a revised plan. And there's a back and forth before this meeting concerning next steps overall. I, I know that there's concern that uh, Burnett and I shared with making sure it gets vetted to the uh, groups interested that were listed before. To see if they feel that their comments were encapsulated in the changes, the SVP A for instance, uh, and others for that matter. Uh, so we want to make sure that happens. And then once we're in a good position, Ben, you had mentioned our back and forth. Uh, that might be the time to do the renderings, which kind of are kind of at the ground level renderings, looking into the park, what it would look like essentially. Cause we did budget twelve thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, for design and we're only spending forty-five hundred, I think it is with Studio A on the base plan. So there's money set aside to get a better buy-in from the public. So that's kind of where we stand with it, but go ahead. This is your topic. I just wanted to give everybody the insight of where we are.
Yep, thank you. That was, that was something I was hoping to do as well. So thank, uh, basically uh, explain where we are and uh, next steps with the Whizwell Park Plan. Um, so uh, there was a previous draft and that was shared, uh, and there were surveys done. Um, and we got P- feedback from farmers market people and from um, and from BSBPA as well and some board feedback and um, and others. Um, first, I'm, I'm, is it possible to um, allow Caitlin to chime in? Um, cause uh, when I go through uh, where we are, she has more uh, direct insight and contact with this project. No, it's not a presentation, but I'm, I'm describing where we are and things that have happened and she has uh, insight into that and contributions. And so um, just as we've done with other, um, when we're talking about a topic, there was someone in the audience has particular knowledge. We allow them, enable them to uh, chime in um, as they see fit. That's what I'm requesting now. I don't anticipate uh, a long conversation here. Or, or a presentation, but um, I'm sure she has some uh, valuable insights that can add some value to this topic.
She wants to raise her hand if that's what she intends to do here. I mean, I, I don't, I can't see something in here.
Okay, great. So I'll just go through, um, she sent a list along with the diagrams to the board about what um, how responsive they've been to the feedback they've got from the groups I just mentioned. And uh, they're trying to be particularly sensitive to um, the uses of the various uses of the park, including open space. Um, places for people to watch movies. The farmer's market has been a high priority issue and vendors in general. And the ability for people to have activities in the park. And so with those considerations in mind, they, in response to feedback from the previous draft. They're gonna have uh, fewer trees along Walnut Street and fewer bushes and plants around the perimeter to enable vendors to, to be there. Um, fewer picnic tables in the back. There were too many picnic tables. There is gonna be a large pavilion of picnic tables underneath it. Um, a smaller spring area at the corner so that again, it doesn't infringe on the, the vendor area. Um, smaller kid play area, um, eliminate this uh, stage area and put it sort of raised space under the pavilion. Um, and just have one back at the back corner on Front Street again, just to limit the number of things in the park. Um, and then there's. A little, we'll at some point see this, but um, there's a slightly different layout of the path. Um, and Caitlin, you want to add anything to um?
She sort of slid off, I think.
Oh, she's off?
Yeah.
Um. So, um. What I'd like to talk about is the next steps. Um, I think we all agree that um, we're ready for the next uh, iteration of feedback. What I'd like to suggest is, um, you know, we're only paying um, Studio A five thousand dollars. Uh, they've been quite accommodating. Um, we've gotten a lot of feedback so far. What I'd like to suggest is that we make this available and, and Caitlin's already sent this to the BSBPA, but. But make this, yeah, no, make this available to the public and um, and have some final comments, like a final round of comments. So that we can basically uh, and get feedback from this board and the additional comments based on this version. Um, and try to finalize the uh, the basic layout. So that uh, we can then have the next version of the uh, diagram created. Because we want this to be more or less final before we do the next version. It's gonna cost another two thousand dollars. And um, so I feel like we're, we're close to, to the um, file, but um, there's still uh, a need for a final round of comment. And so I'd like to ask that we post this on the website and also that this board provide feedback. And the SVP A provide feedback um, in the next two weeks. So that the next meeting, ideally, we'd have a, a final, final that we could then say, yes, we approve of this, this uh, layout. And uh, we can then create the, the, you know, uh, the expensive diagram.
Okay, Bernard, uh, if you wanted to cover some of your concerns that, since we're apparently rehashing an email to change.
Oh, Kate, Caitlin's.
Okay, well, first, first things first, I, Bernard was in line here, so we'll give her a second.
Um, so we, I, what I, I think it's hard for people to understand, you know, if they're not used to looking at flats, what this, what this could look like. And um, for instance, the, the line of trees, what kind of trees are those? Are those going to grow large, the ones that are along Walnut Street? I, I think, I appreciate the notes, um, and I understand this is just a plan, but it might help folks better understand. Like what is, how big? I know there's a scale, but not everybody's gonna know how to use the graphic scale. Uh, how big is the spring area? That is a large corner or that's a pretty important corner. And it, it's being utilized by that when it's traditionally been utilized by, you know, many different um, sort of activities. Um, you know, for instance, what's the, the, the playground, you know, the playground area, is that pretty large? I know that we can kind of maybe guess its area, um, but to some degree, that's why I think having, I, I, I understand what you're saying about like getting closer to the final. Um, but that would be hard to get, I guess, true in, input from folks as to what this looks like or what this means. It's hard, it's hard if you're not used to looking at these type of plans. So that, that was what I was raising earlier. Um, I think it helps to have visuals and planning board, you know, we often ask for, you know, what it looks like from applicants, you know, even early in the process.
Elevations.
Elevations, thank you. That's the word. Um, for people to understand. So what, I mean, this is a pretty important park. It's, you know, in my, my heart, it's one of the most important parks. Um, you know, they're all important, but you know, this one's right in the, the heart of our community. Um, I think it would be helpful for them to have visuals that are, are more accessible and understandable as, you know. Oh, if I'm just walking on Front Street grabbing coffee or um, you know, if I'm gonna be in there enjoying it with my family. Um, it, it, it just brings it more human, you know, in human terms, human scale. Um, so that's what I was advocating for before. There are things, like I said, that I think uh, people are gonna like, you know, from what I can see. But I still, there's still concerns that I know, you know, for instance, the SVP A or other groups might have concerns about. So I'm glad that, you know, Dana told me that she received a copy of, the updated copy today, uh, this, late this afternoon. So, um, that's kind of what my concerns were right now. Um, and.
Well, I, I think we, we share the same concerns, so to speak, in that we are all looking for additional feedback. The question is how to uh, process this through to completion. And I think the time is ripe to share this diagram, understanding that it, it may um, it may, it will change.
Not without measurements.
There, there is a scale right here.
Look, I just said, not everybody's gonna understand how to use that. If they're not used to looking at flats.
It should be a public friendly uh, graphic.
Say this is ten speed by whatever.
Yeah, so that is planned, but in the, in, on the way to that, um, this is a layout. So the other piece will show much additional detail. There is no really grading in, in Whizwell, but um, it is a little.
I'm not talking about grading.
But this, this shows the layout and this, I think, um, is a much clearer diagram than the previous one. And uh, people can, um, many people can look at it and understand it, knowing that uh, we're looking for feedback and it's. Um, we're trying to move this towards a final layout, not, so there's a whole nother stage at which um, the exact pavilion is, is chosen. And the kinds of bricks and the kinds of trees, all those things. Uh, that's uh, after this basic layout is basically configured. So that's where we're trying to nail this down. And I think there's enough information for at least the board to understand this diagram and provide feedback. Um, I, I believe BSBPA feels like they can understand this and provide feedback. And so the, the, what I would suggest is that the public also be given access to this um, on the website to provide feedback. And then we can see what the feedback is and go from there and decide, oh yeah, this is close to done or this is where we need to be. Or no, we need to change it again. Um, you know, we, we can only ask him to change things so many times with, because he's giving us a very low price. But let's let Caitlin, uh, what would you like to add?
Out of fairness, Ben, the first rendition ignored a lot of advice that he was given in meetings I attended. And so I'm glad he's finally rectified some of those things and because there were some certain things that we said were sacrosanct in there that were basically blown.
Like what are you referring to?
It just, certain uh, aspects of the entries, certain aspects of just locations of, you know, various items and issues throughout the park. Where the uh, farmer's market needed to be, he was basically pushing the farmer's market into the center of the park. And that was something that he was told flat out that was not gonna be something beautiful, acceptable, stuff like that. So that's at least been somewhat rectified. I can't say it's been fully rectified because that corner is still in uh, question right now. But just, just out of fairness, he didn't necessarily listen to that at first one fully.
I guess I disagree. I, I feel like.
Part of the meetings.
I think you've been, you've only been a small fraction of the Park and Tree Board.
No, no, with, with Jeff, actually.
Caitlin's been in, in constant contact with Jeff and um, they've, they've tried to be extraordinarily sensitive and responsive to the feedback they've gotten. The um, the spring in the corner is much smaller, the footprint in responsive feedback than it would have been otherwise. Um, but let Kate, let's let Caitlin uh, talk to some of those issues.
Hi Caitlin.
Hi. Um.
Caitlin, let, let me, let me.
I just want such.
If you want, if, if, if you give me a second, I'll kind of give you something, because I know you were off and on there. You may not have heard everything. Moral of that, what was being said here was that, you know, getting buy-in from stakeholders is gonna be an important, crucial step here. I think the only thing uh, in question is whether or not to release this to the public or not at this point. Uh, and maybe getting some measurements uh, from what uh, Burnett was saying on it, uh, on top of it. What, what are your thoughts? What do you want to add to that? I didn't mean interrupt anybody, just want to give you the full conversation to that point.
All right, yeah. And so I do apologize. Um, apparently I've never zoomed on my computer, because it's usually my iPad and it was all confused and I had to restart. But here we are. Thank you for your patience. And so I guess where we are, where the Park and Tree Board is, is we are kind of looking for guidance as to where to go next. You know, we originally had survey feedback, um, as well as some other things that got us what was really important and necessary. We got the two original designs that we looked at. We discussed as a board, as well as reached out to the BSBPA. I know they shared it in meetings and Dana, as Ben mentioned, um, had me get in touch with some key people who organize events in the park. And who are integral with the farmer's market to get their feedback. From there, we had a good amount of back and forth with a lot of people. And you know, my board just tried to take all of the things that people generally seem to agree on and really integrate those into it. So eliminating benches around the outer perimeter of the park, as well as some plants to make sure that there's a lot of vendor space available. Where they're used to having vendor space available. That's really opening accessible to the public. Um, eliminating the seating wall around the fountain, just again, to make sure, because we know that's prime uh, real estate for vendors to set up. Um, making sure there were less trees along the back and just to put out there, um, because Bernard had mentioned it. You know, we do have a tree expert on our board and he would never, ever, ever let us plant anything that was not perfectly. You know, we do have a tree expert on our board and he would never, ever, ever let us plant anything that was not perfectly appropriate. There's power lines that run up there, so they'd have to be smaller ornamental trees. And the idea of that was really just to soften the line because there's the wall and the chain link fence back there kind of. Messes up the flow of a park, so we thought about softening. That would be a good idea. And so, yeah, I feel like we, we got the feedback from the businesses, from the farmer's market. We met with a couple other people and I feel like we've. Taken the feedback that everyone agreed on. And implemented that into this new drawing. This is also easier to read than the previous. He's. Labeled a lot of things. It's, you know, maybe scale is difficult to understand. Um, but right now we're really just trying to come up with a layout plan. Uh, one of my board members did suggest possibly. Kind of doing some math with it and figuring out how many vendor tables could fit to make sure people felt very comfortable, that that was still available. Jeff was knew that we definitely needed to have seating space available and open space available for, um. Events as well as clear views of the wall for movies in the park. Um, we've tried to take a lot of these things into consideration and we've mainly. Interacted with the businesses and the BSBPA and the farmer's market for feedback, but we haven't gotten. You know, I think it, we feel like it's maybe time, the next step is to start to get residents feedback because it's also used as a passive park for other people and we want to kind of. See what else there is. So we don't know what steps exactly you want us to take before that happens. If you don't think we're ready to do that, but we're reaching out to the village board to help guide us in those directions. Because we feel like we're at a point where it's time to start getting broader feedback.
So here's my thought, Caitlin, uh, just kind of trying to figure out a good pathway. Let's see, what do you think I see here as well, who's on your board? In the meantime, while BSBTA and other major stakeholders, including the board, look at what's currently been given. Ask Jeff to put size representations, you know, uh, major features, uh, inside this diagram that we have here. Uh, and also if there is availability of the current state of the park in that same kind of overhead view. For people to see the difference between before and after, I think that would be extremely helpful. If you do go to the public with this version, to have that as a side by side of before, after scenario. If there are no major things that develop from the stakeholders, I think you'll have all this stuff ready to go. To show the public at that point in time, if that makes sense. And that way we kind of do it in an incremental process to see. Well, maybe this is a real mess up somewhere that we didn't catch that somebody catches stakeholder wise. And we need to send one more time back to Jeff, fix this. Now we're ready, let's go out to the public with this.
Well, I'm, we seem to be afraid to go to the public. Why not go to the public at the same time we're getting feedback from everyone else?
If I, if I could say something, well, for, I know we're talking about major stakeholders. But the first, second and third major stakeholder is the general public. So this park should accommodate their needs for second and third. So. Uh, because those are the people that are going to use it the vast majority of the time. So I don't see any reason why this can't be put on our webpage for people to, the public to make comment. However, I do think it would behoove us to maybe have a Studio A. Provide a presentation at a, at a meeting with maybe some. Digital renderings of elevations and also, as she said, put templates in for vendor tents. And that would probably assuage a lot of the, a lot of the fears of the public.
One of the concerns there, just so you know, this, because this was discussed, was that it will cost additional money once you get the elevations in. So. We want to make sure we're locked into something so that elevations aren't going to have to be done two, three times because that's where it's going to get costly.
Exactly right. It's going to cost us more money to keep, or if you're walking into the park. That's where I think the 12,000 would be. And if we're not to a point where, where we're ready to do that, why would we want to spend money on that?
So I'm just trying to get us kind of into an incremental location and also, again, having a before and after, I think, gives people a much better appreciation for. Where we are or where we've been, where we're going type of thing. It gets a better buying, I think.
I, I, I agree, but there is no logical or rational reason. Not to put this on the website just to get, get basic public feedback. There is no reason that I can see. Obviously, it, it may change. It may change on public comment too, but. Transparency and giving more information to the public. Is, is a good thing, at least in my mind. Um, I don't see why. I think if this was actually digitally represented. As a 24 by 36 to scale, I think you'd find people would get. Uh, would understand it a lot better. Um, I think. An eight and a half, 11 of a 24 by 36, yeah, it's definitely hard to look at. But a digital representation where you could actually zoom in on it and look at the specifics, um, I don't see. Any reason to wait to put it on there. I do think there's probably a lot more. Feedback that we get, not only from the public, but from the other stakeholders that, you know, is this going to work? And that feedback does need to go back to Studio A.
So would you object to me, uh, me having a conversation with Jeff, uh, with me and Caitlin this week, having a conversation with Jeff about this discussion? And seeing what he's willing to do to get this into a larger format, to get a presentation together, et cetera? Would you be okay with that conversation happening since we can't speak to Jeff at this point?
Oh, I think that needs to happen, so.
And Caitlin, are you okay with that happening? I know you and I have talked about a couple of things anyways this week.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, that would be great. I think Jeff would be willing. He likes it better when we drive to Saratoga and he doesn't have to leave his office, but we can talk about that later. The lovely office, by the way. Um, I did just want to say too that, um, I know, like. If, when we get to the point where we want to present it, my board is very happy to write up. Explanations so that there's less up in the air because I know, like, I've given you guys some feedback about the changes we made, but. We can talk about the trees and the plans we would make for those. We can talk about the matching furniture. We've. Talked about as far as continuity in the park and some of the changes and like. Focusing on all of the things we have considered and that we want people to know. Um, we would be very happy to write that up so that if people are visualizing it on the village website, that we will have. A lot of points for them to consider if it seems confusing to just try to smooth that out.
Caitlin, since we're talking about this, can you explain the history and rationale for the, um, spring being put in that front center location?
I mean, this has been something that I believe has been talked about far. Prior to my being on the Park and Tree Board. But, you know, as just a person who grew up in this area, like I think having the spring in a prominent position and being prettier makes sense. And. When we did survey work as well as when other people were planning things from the park, this has always been kind of the location. That it was drawn to on the corner. If people want to stop and take a drink, if that's your thing. Um, as well as just showcasing the water because it's something that I feel like we should be proud of. Um, as well as, you know, historical markers and things that people want to really showcase about the village.
Saratoga called, they said their water's better.
We were here first, it's fine.
Caitlin, do you feel it will interfere with farmer's market at all?
Uh, no, I don't think it will interfere with the farmer's market. And again, I, I've showed the plans to the BSBPA and. It, this corner being used for the spring was in general, we, or in general favored. Um, one of the people who is a business owner who is also involved with the farmer's market said that they thought it was a great idea to have it at the corner and that it would be a draw. And would be beneficial to the park. We have definitely made, or we want to make sure the design is small enough that it still allows a lot of. Uh, real estate space in that corner for people to use. And you know what? Being next to the spring can be a positive for people. It's a cute little thing. It's nice and the village. Should showcase it and not having 80s bathroom faucet on a brick structure in the back.
Caitlin, uh, it's in particular to that because I, I am hearing some. Concerns still about it being located there. I don't know if you guys have looked at a different spot, but at minimum, can you please make sure we have the dimensions? Between that location and the, the, the trunk of the tree, it looks like, you know, to see if you can fit a vendor there. Um, I just, I really am actually concerned. I, I, the farmer's market has really been impacted and. We, we don't, we want it to thrive, so, um, that would be very helpful. Um. I know, I appreciate, you know, I, I, you know, I emailed it when, if you had sent it to, you know, previous stakeholders and Leir, uh, that afternoon, Dana had sent, but. Said that you texted or that you not gave it to her, so I do appreciate that. Um, so, so those are some of my concerns. I know they're major stakeholders, but they provide many services to our residents that, you know, that they enjoy.
Of all the people in the BSBPA who I have talked to, which starts with Dana and then trickles down to her telling me to talk to other people and then has Dana reporting back to me about what they've discussed at their meetings. I have received no concern over that. Other than the fact that we need to, uh, make sure that there's, you know, enough space that it's not too big, that it's not too intrusive for people on the corner. Um, but again, that is something, we've already made changes to help facilitate that and we'll continue to talk to people about it.
Okay, make sure it's clear what the sizing is, so thank you.
I mean, the scale says, uh, one inch to 10 feet.
So that people can usually consume it, that's what I mean. Write it literally out. This is 10 feet from this, or this is the size of this.
You asked what the dimension was and you, I know you can understand that one inch equals 10.
I can, but not everybody knows how to read these, that's the whole point.
There's a reason why planning boards, uh, ask people to put elevations in so that there can be more visualization and understanding because these. Top-down views just are very tough for the. You know, average Joe to read and understand, and I understand that fully. It's just not something that's going to. Draw understanding of where things are in relation to each other in that respect.
So, so I think it's a good idea to show the current park diagram. I think Jeff has that. Next to this, is there any reason? So what is the?
I think we got the marching orders generally here.
I'm not, I guess I'm not clear again, why, what, what you are going to do, you're going to have elevations added to this? And, and dimensions?
Caitlin and I are going to talk to Jeff to see what the next steps would be to get to a presentation of position. In the meantime, BSBPA and board can feel free to give any other suggestions here. And then, uh, if Jeff feels like he's ready to go with a presentation for the next meeting, we'll get him on to the next meeting, uh, with full view and get everything up there at that point in time to review that. And also work on getting elevations, uh, in time for a more public presentation scenario so that everything's out in front of people at once. They don't get a piecemeal approach either.
That's, I just, I'm trying to clarify that, that what you're going to add to this version is elevations.
Elevation would be, elevation would be on that version. It's a separate sheet altogether. It's what you see when you get a planning board, uh, package with side of a building, for instance. You, you see the site.
It's a whole other piece of paper.
Yes, okay, yes.
Well, they're asking for a minimum of these, so give me, this is, this 90 by that 90, like written out so people can just quickly.
All right, so you want how many feet are written on each piece and elevations? You may charge more for, for that.
We, we are under the budget right now for a reason because we assumed we were going to do a certain level of. You know, presentation worthiness of this because it's an important project. I think we had a budget 12,000 for that reason.
So when you say, sorry, when you say elevate, you mean elevations of the structures or the land, the topography?
It's not a topography issue. An elevation of a building would be the, look at the facade of the building straight on, basically. That's called.
All right, so the, the pavilion, like they haven't been, hasn't been chosen yet.
They can kind of give a, uh, this is roughly what we're thinking about.
Correct.
Again.
My, your view when you're standing in an entrance of this is what you'll see when you enter the park. It looks great, it doesn't look great ultimately, so.
We're not asking for, I don't think anybody's asking for a specific, you know.
Material.
Now, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got a ways to go too, because even after you've decided all this, now you have to. Who's, who's doing the electrical plant? Who's, who's doing the foundations for the light poles and the pavilion? So they're.
Well, you have to choose all the products. And just so people know, and Caitlin can add anything she wants to this, is the playground is supposed to be like sort of very minimal kind of playground, sort of a nature kind of thing where like. A rock or logs for to climb up, not.
That's important for a narrative also.
Yeah, not, not something that, not something that would be like some big metal structure that goes up.
You know, presentation and narrative as well. I think that's going to be important, I think, with that stuff. So I think we've kind of beaten this one to the pulp and we'll get this one, uh, processed through Caitlin. Uh, be in touch with me tomorrow. It's going to be a little tight because I have a meeting up in Milton, uh, about water districts. So after tomorrow, uh, this week, if you want to see if Jeff's got availability, you and I can have a call with him or go up to see him, okay?
All right, that sounds good. I'll be in touch. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for, uh, spending time with us tonight.
Ma'am. May I have your name and address for the minutes, please?
Please, hang in, 50 more streets.
Thank you.
Uh, rules of procedure, Ben says we're confused about something. Wouldn't tell us what we're confused about, so I'm confused. Go ahead, Ben.
All right, I'm going to read a statement and I'll turn it in afterwards and feel free to respond or not. I feel the need to talk about our rules and procedures because I not feel the mayor is following them. Last week, we were in the middle of discussing the park's law. When Frank abruptly cut off discussion table despite the fact that it was clearly in mid-sentence and was not done discussing the law. In the rules of procedure, it states. A member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to call him or her to order. If a member while speaking were called to order, the member should cease speaking until the question of order is determined. And if in order, the member shall be permitted to proceed. There is no limit to the number of times a member may speak on a matter. I feel that the mayor did not follow the rules and procedures as written, and we should discuss this discrepancy. The rules of procedure says that the board members, quote, shall not be interrupted, that board members, quote, shall not be interrupted when speaking, unquote. Within the proper order of the agenda and the question of proper order was never raised and never in question. Your interruption occurred at one hour, 17 minutes and about seven seconds for those who are interested. I had no issue with tabling the motion. In fact, I would have voted for it if it had occurred about 15 seconds later. But tabling cannot be used to shut down discussion the mayor doesn't like or doesn't want and interrupt board members in mid-sentence. The rules of procedure do not allow that. There is good reason why the only excuse for interrupting a board member during a scheduled discussion on the agenda is to determine the question of order. The public should be able to hear and witness in real time the deliberations of its elected body. Of course, there will be discussion between meetings, but public meetings are very important opportunities for transparency. And discussion behind the scenes should never substitute for discussion before the public. Tabling should never be used to move a discussion behind closed doors when the discussion before the public has not even come to an end. And it should never be used, as it was, as a tool for the board majority to silence the board minority. Tabling should only be introduced after all board members have finished their public comments related to the agenda item at hand. There was a time when the mayor was in the board, when the mayor was in the board minority that he more greatly valued public facing discussions of board business. And claimed that editing draft laws is not even allowed between meetings. On May 11th, 2023, the mayor sent an email regarding the sidewalk law stating a majority, quote, majority of the board isn't edit. The legislation outside of, question mark? I guess we shouldn't even have public meetings anymore and continued in a separate email that. That same day, quote, last I checked, Ben, you cannot legislate by email in the manner you're attempting, end quote. In an August 25th, 2023 email on the ethics law, the mayor wrote, quote, once a public hearing is set, you cannot continue tweaking language, unquote. Now that the mayor is in the board majority, his positions changed 180 degrees. Now it's fine to tweak laws between meetings and after the public hearing has been set. No problem. He's now organized, organized that effort multiple times. However, now that the mayor is quite comfortable working behind the scenes, it is even more important that board members insist on our right to public hearing views and public facing deliberations. Emails between meetings should supplement but never substitute for live public discussion. Thank you.
Just out of, uh, full transparency, Ben, I specifically waited till you were done speaking. To make a motion to table under respect. Liz, you can shake your head all you want. I actually remember he asked a rhetorical question, if I remember correctly. Which at the end of the question, he was done speaking and I made a motion to table. You can shake your head all you want, Liz. It was exactly what happened.
It's in the recording.
Yeah, exactly. It is in the recording, Ben, because I watched you, to see you screaming at people, yelling at that meeting. Okay, so I had to watch it back and I did see how it transpired. Motion to table, once seconded, is not a discussion-based motion at that point in time, as we stated. In further discussions, it is to go directly to a vote. If voted yes, the discussion obviously completely ends because it's on the table at that point or taken to the table. If it is voted no, then discussion continues at that point in time. And so once it was seconded and I was not presiding at that point in time, so I was waiting to see if Bernard was going to. Uh, make a second or ask somebody else to second it. She did eventually and that's what happened. That's Robert's rules.
The, um, the motion to table should not have been introduced. By interrupting the, in mid-sentence and, um, what happened was I was making a point. And you said motion table and I looked up and said, what? And then you, you just bulldog your way through to, uh, you know, do I have a second and, and close the discussion down? So, um, yeah, it's fine. I would have, I would have supported that motion to table because the law was not ready to be, uh. You know, scheduled for a public hearing at that point in time. But I don't want to be interrupted. I had one more point to say, as I made very clear last meeting. I wanted to talk about an appeal process if. But I don't want to be interrupted. I had one more point to say, as I made very clear last meeting. I wanted to talk about an appeal process if the normal permit is sort of moot now because the board's gonna see everything, so uh, there really is no appeal process. But if the, if it's gonna stop at the clerk, there probably should be an appeal process. That's what I, that's the final point I wanted to make and I have the right to finish that conversation. That is not out of order and I think your, your interrupting motion was out of order. So, that's all. I mean, we can go back and forth, but. So this is a one hour seventeen minutes, seven seconds. If you want to play that out there.
Do you make the motion, Ken? Maybe I would.
I wanted consistency. I might have said, well, if you're doing it from a blunt place, do it throughout, but I, that is. What?
Do you make the motion, Ken?
Yes, I do.
Well, I, I have another comment. But I have, no, I have something else I'd like to bring up.
Alright, I was about where it ended.
I know, but there's something else going on in this.
Take it offline, Ben, at this point. It's gonna be handled in the next day or two, so if you got concerned.
You've told us in the past, we can't even make changes between meetings. We have to do it in four days.
That's not accurate. We've been doing this process as it is sway and I've got a motion to table I'm making.
I'll second please.
Well.
Ken.
The, the other please.
Yeah, so once it was seconded, it needed to cease.
Well, once I, you, as long as I'm talking about a, a motion in a proper order, I, you're not supposed to interrupt and stop the conversation. That's the point I'm making. That I just had a common courtesy, respect, and following the rules of procedure, um, we should not be interrupted if we have points to make about what we're talking about, what's on the agenda at that moment. So that's all I'm saying is I, I hope it doesn't happen again. Um, I feel like it was improper uh, procedure to, to make that interruption. So I wanted to bring that back to our attention.
Well, I apologize if you feel that way. It was not intended to offend you. It was not intended to cut you off if you feel that you were cut off from making a point. Nonetheless, when a motion table is introduced, it has to cease.
Well, now that, I, I agree that, yes, I, I learned something new that there's no discussion after there's a motion table. Again, I just wish the motion table happened about fifteen seconds later. But thank you for apology and I know that things happen at the heat of the moment. So my, my voice gets loud, so I apologize for that. And we can all learn from this. Thank you.
I think you owe Terry an apology most of all, to be honest with you.
I was not even talking to Terry when she told me to lower my voice. It really has nothing to do with Terry. This is the board, uh, conversation.
Okay. So, uh, to be added, uh, as other business later, and if you have a comment on it, please use public comment number two, uh, related to it. The following motion would be made, and this was discussed earlier between the board. It will be a motion to engage the verge engineering to be construction manager for the John Street Water Tower renovation project at the rates listed in La Verge's twenty twenty-four rate sheet and allowing the mayor to execute such agreement after review by the village's attorney. Obviously, it's gonna be, have to be consistent with a, a normal engineering agreement and obviously the board will get a chance to see it once it is, uh, ready to go. But obviously, I have to get approval from the attorney before I ever execute that agreement. So that will be added to the, uh, other business later on, just so folks are aware of it. Uh, we just got the rate sheet in, uh, today and it's gonna be important to have him engaged because he needs to do a change order for us, as was discussed in the resolution we approved a little bit earlier. Okay, having said that, public comment on any issue, three minutes. Liz.
Liz, Coroner eighty-nine, hi. A couple of questions. I think, uh, it's a little disturbed by your passing motion B because one of the things that people, you know, you're gonna up the reimbursement, they're gonna build four foot wide sidewalks. That's not within DOT regs. That's not what we intend to do. That's just one example. Where are you gonna have in and out sidewalks happening? Secondly, uh, I'd like to hear some more on the financing of the John Street Water Tower. You went into great detail on the, on, um, on the, uh, you know, financing for, um, the other project, but what, what are we gonna do with the USDA for seventy-eight Thompson? Is the water tower also going to be funded by USDA loan? What's the term? I've heard that we're gonna need to increase water rates to cover those bond payments, and I think that should be made transparent and open once we now know how much this project costs. How are we gonna finance it? Are we gonna take it from a fund balance? And what's the impact on our water rates gonna be, um, from, from that? Just one reminder on Wiswol Park. The end of July is the deadline for grants. And if you're gonna go for a grant to help pay to do Wiswol Park, and it would be great if that could happen this year, not next year, you need a budget. So you need to wrap this up and get to the point where you've got a budget where you can put it into a grant application and, and qualify for grant money, um, to, uh, to execute this project. It's been going on for many years. And, um, the park really needs a redo. Um, so, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Eve? How are you? I haven't seen you in a while. There you go.
Eve Kenyon fifty North Street and proud to be a resident of Boston Spa forty-eight years, most of my life, but not all of it. And I love Boston Spa because we are a village of friends and I love how we work together. And being a part of the Parks and Trees Board has been wonderful. It's been not quite a year, but I've had, I've learned a lot and especially about trees and the importance of choosing the right trees. And we've worked hard on the design. And yeah, it might be a little bit, um, confusing to look at, but one thing, by it being one inch to one foot, just cut a little one inch square. And I believe that most of the farmer's market tents might be ten by ten or twelve by twelve. You just put them out. We figured we could put at least twenty very easily around the outskirts and many more around the circle of, of the thing, of the sidewalk. I think it's very important. It is a park for the community, for people like me who like to walk to a library, walk to the post office. I need a break in the park. I sit down right now on a kind of pitiful looking bench. Any of them are really in terrible shape. It's a rough sidewalk. I choose not to walk through the middle because the sidewalk is rough. It needs, it's time. And I don't remember the last time it was ever upgraded in forty-eight years. Anyway, if anybody wants to ask me about what we've been discussing, because we've been doing this since last summer, I believe. It's, it's been a while. Um, I think I joined in July or August last year. So, anyway, just wanted to say that and, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Love having you on board. Thanks for, uh, doing what you're doing with Park Tree Board for sure. Who else?
Marilyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. Uh, I think it is important, um, to show the public the plan map of Wiswol Park. Uh, if anybody doesn't know how to interpret the scale that's there, there's a thing called a ruler. And I'll be happy to show somebody how to use that. But I think even at this early stage, it is important to be transparent about what has happened. It's a very long process. More than a year ago, my husband was asked to do a consulting free to Park and Tree about what they could do to improve the look and the function of the dilapidated benches. Nothing really transpired, even though he spent time and effort to advise the group. Thank you, trustee Raymond, for standing up for the public. It's very important that the public be involved at every step of the way for this asset in the community. We're a community of more than just the business community. It's a community of residents and visitors. And for very long, Wiswol has been quite dilapidated. Unfortunately, it's a bit of an eyesore at certain times of the year. So I want to thank the Park and Tree Board and the other folks like the Garden Club, who has been involved in the past, taking an interest in what's happening there at Wiswol. And, uh, don't be afraid or don't underestimate the quality of the community. They can take a look at that plan map and form an opinion about what they see there. And certainly call on other members of the community to assist. And as I said, it's early on in the process, but we've got to, we've got to share that information. Uh, one last thing. I'm still not clear about, um, the response to a comment, uh, maybe for the budget workshops. Something about, you know, they're in the near future, so if someone, Mr. Mayor, or anybody has information as to the timeframe that is going to happen, and if there's a worksheet for preparation for estimating next fiscal year's budget, I'd appreciate listening to that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, go ahead. Let's see about.
I'm listening to one church. I may have missed something. I wanted to ask about Wiswol Park. You get it all said and done. Maybe I missed this part. Who's gonna maintain? Because like you mentioned in the, of the benches, they're in disarray because they haven't maintained. They haven't pretty properly. If you can, you find whatever part of the village you want, but let's just maintain, there's no money with. So, did I miss it? Or is there someplace in the plan? If it's not, can we possibly put it in the plan? Instead of having to go wayside like this part bit? Also, I wanted to bring you guys, the last time I was here, I was standing here at ten thirty and nineteen o'clock. And it's twenty minutes to nine and you guys are grand check, tracking, getting out like within two hours. Good job.
That's, that's why I was good to see you, Bob. Anything else? If we had to. Seeing neither, except for Krista Buke's hand. Chris, go ahead.
Chris Buke, Six Keeling Drive. Again, I also want to thank all the hard work that went into that plan from, uh, Park and Tree, Friends of Wiswol, this board. Uh, there's a lot of work that has to go in there. I know sometimes we get a little bit in our corners, we get a little heated with stuff, and I think sometimes that's what slows down progress for emotion. I also want to thank you, Bernadette, also for standing up for the public because again, I agree, that is a nice looking plan, but I like to see a little bit measurements. And, uh, you know, I don't need to be shown how to use a ruler, but sometimes it's nice to just have it on the actual diagram, uh, just so you can eyeball it real quick. Uh, having been a small business owner, setting up a ten by ten tent in, uh, various farmer markets, uh, you know, that would make or break a good day and, you know, uh, what type of weekend we might have as a family, uh, depending on how much we earn. And I'm always in supporting those businesses, especially the farmer's market, so I can understand the concern. I like the proposal. Let's get a before and after. Before you present it to the public, uh, I'm a very visual person. Uh, I like to see that top-down of the way it looks now. I know it probably looked quite messy on there and what it could be turned into. Uh, again, the diagrams are also helpful with the measurements because of the relocating with the fountain. I know that was a discussion I made a while back. Uh, having worked for Water and Sewer Department of running that water line to the fountain. Uh, you know, what are we looking at? How are we gonna run that line? Where is it gonna go? What kind of, uh, do we have to dig anything up to run that line, to relocate it? And also, uh, the concern with how to set up a booth between that, uh, tree and the fountain. How much feet am I gonna have? So there's a lot of moving pieces there. I agree, the public does need to see it, but again, uh, you know, your businesses are the, uh, heart and blood of your community as well. So, uh, I think we can tie it down. But again, I think before it gets rolled out to the public, let's get a before and after, uh, as well. I don't think that's too hard to do. Uh, I know, uh, there were diagrams before that Marilyn had mentioned as well, uh, that we've had, uh, that have been tweaked. So maybe that diagram can be used sort of, where it is before and what Studio A has looked into, propose where we can move forward with it. Other than that, again, thank you for, you know, all the hard work that's been going into that.
Thanks, Chris. Final call. Seeing none. Uh, let's see, the other business included, but not limited to board response, public comment. Let me make the motion real quick, then we'll get the comments, uh, generally if I can, so I don't forget to do this. Kind of get the motions engaged with verge engineering to be construction manager for the John Street Water Tower renovation project at the rates listed on the Verge's twenty twenty-four rate sheet and allowing the mayor to execute such agreement after review by the village's attorney. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price, motion discussion. All in favor? opposed, motion carries. Thank you for that. Uh, anybody who wanted to say anything for other business, I'll have a response, uh, but I'll wait.
Yeah, I get it.
Sure.
So we just approved John Street Water Tower, uh, bid. And, uh, I know there's been a lot of questions of why it's taken so long to get here. Um, so I wrote down basically a, a history of, of how we got here, you know, today, to having a bid. And when I was writing it, all of a sudden it became two and a half pages. So instead of sitting here saying that verbatim to you. I'm just gonna hit the highlights of, of the history and the timeline. And, um, you know, it will be in the minutes as an attachment if you want to read it in its full detail. But, uh, here we go. So, uh, there was a condition assessment in twenty seventeen of all water towers, including John Street Tower. Basically, the consensus from that was that there were, uh, some condition issues on the exterior, uh, but there was nothing that required immediate attention, but it was recommended that we do some sort of maintenance. At, at that point, uh, the majority of the village board decided uh, to wait until the next five-year condition assessment, which was, would have been scheduled roughly in twenty twenty-one, uh, to determine the course of action. And there's a lot of reasons for that, that we didn't do any maintenance. One of them was that we simply didn't have a fund balance. Um, at the time, it was only a forty thousand dollar fund balance. Um, so that wouldn't really support payments for a long-term loan for any kind of major work. And a lot of it had to do with there, there was never a capital improvement plan for well over a decade. So, uh, without that and without incremental raises in taxes and water slash sewer rates, uh, it's difficult to prepare for your current needs, let alone the future needs. And even if we're able to generate that revenue somehow, uh, at that current time, uh, we had a kind of a fiscal dis- disarray going on in the village. Uh, and we're actually under the scrutiny of the state comptroller. So I would, it's very unlikely that we would have been able to get a loan from any institution to do any work that needed to be done. It was around that time that due to our fiscal condition that trustee Shaw and myself recommended a significant increase in taxes. And, uh, also we, to restructure water rates and fire protection rates, uh, in a way to increase revenue and also reduce the fire department's dependence on taxpayer dollars. In twenty nineteen, a new mayor, Larry Wilbright, uh, started his term with a budget surplus and a sizable fund balance, which was the results of the changes that were recommended and was also the seed for our current fund balance. Mayor Wilbright further increased the fund balance through debt consolidation with the very low interest rates at that time. A year later, due to the pandemic, a pause on any additional spending other than required to maintain the operations of the village was considered the best course of action. It was then decided to wait until the next water tower condition assessment, again, in twenty twenty-one to address the condition of the John Street Tower, the other towers and some of the infrastructure. So in December twenty twenty-one, I was tasked by Mayor Fitzpatrick to write an RFP for feasibility study. for feasibility study, not only to address the John Street Tower, but also have an assessment of our other towers and aging infrastructure. In the summer of twenty twenty-two, upon receipt of the water tower's condition assessment report, it was determined that John Street Tower had condition issues that need repair to continue to provide safe, uninterrupted operations in the next five years. It was determined in the fall of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, by our consultants, the village would not be able to obtain grants um, due to our lack of complete municipal water districts outside of village where we provide water, and our very low water rates as compared to other water providers. It was agreed on board in twenty twenty-three that we would alter the scope of the feasibility, feasibility study conducted by LeBurg Associates into an RFP, which is a request for bids, uh, to repair and repaint John Street Tower. Later that year, the pain on the John Street Tower was found to contain lead, which required testing, testing and altering the scope of work for the RFP, which delayed the letting of the bed and increased the cost of repair. So in summary, um, you know, it would be advantageous to be where we are today with a contract to repair and repaint John Street Tower years ago. However, to accomplish that, the long process of planning, conducting studies, and generating the necessary revenue should have been started decades. Certainly prior to twenty eighteen. Due to the recommendation of village board members in twenty eighteen, and the work and planning of subsequent village boards since twenty nineteen, the village has been able to finance this project, finance equipment for E and W, and plan for future in- infrastructure maintenance, with a fund balance going from forty thousand dollars to four plus million dollars in just six years. So, that's really what I wanted to say, and so people have a better understanding of the workings of, of uh, government and why things just take so long.
Million dollar issues don't just creep up overnight and through government, uh, for tape. That's all I'm gonna say to that. Um, with respect to, anybody else have anything? I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right. Just um, you, you anticipate the budget workshops like mid-March. It'd be good to get notice, just that, because they're usually during the day, I think, so the more notice we can get, the better.
Uh, we will circulate to see when we're gonna do them. So I've got to work with Melissa on that as well, because she's gotta be present for them, so I can't just state that, that's gonna be.
Just the more advanced, the better. Thanks.
Um, with respect to uh, concern Liz had about the sidewalk question, the way I would currently read is uh, about whenever sidewalks construct on the streets of, uh, are constructed or repaired, et cetera, on uh, the streets of said village, we can send the village clerk with approved material and of the width and cost provided by law. Uh, should we include the following phrase, just be specific about what law? Yeah, is mentioning, in accordance uh, with with uh, New York State Department of Transportation standards and requirements of Americans, with Americans with Disabilities Act, would that suffice to at least clarify what we need to get a reimbursement at the very least? I think you'd have to do. Carla, could you add that phrase to after the word, provided by law? I'm using the current text. I don't have the new text in front of me, but I'm assuming that was left intact.
So you want the the current one that I sent out today, you want at the end of both of them to say, as provided by law?
So it currently, the current.
Kind of redundant. That's why I'm asking him, if it wouldn't be in the law, if it wasn't provided by law.
Well, the question ultimately Liz has, your concern is that New York State Department of Transportation standards, Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, it's not clear if that's gonna be law, because you're stating the five foot width question. Uh, we're feasible, is what the DOT would require?
Okay, so you wanna put that in the reimbursement part of the law?
So that, to get reimbursed, you had to follow DOT standards and ADA standards.
Okay, yes, I can put language like that in there.
Oh, you would have to, ADA technically is law.
I'm just gonna say has to abide by all legal standards.
Okay, and are you confident that that would cover DOT and ADA?
I think that could be confused, because our legal standards are different than DOT and ADA currently, but why not put DOT and ADA?
I, I can do that, but that, I can do that. I don't know if it's necessary, to be honest. I don't know if any of this is necessary, but I can put it in there.
Well, we take a look at it overnight, uh, into tomorrow, and we'll get a final. Yeah, you know, again, it was brought up tonight to alleviate confusion. It might be worth doing, but let's take a look at it, see how it reads, okay?
And I would support it. Even if it's not necessary, but I think it'd be helpful.
Um, okay, and I think that is, yeah.
Yeah, just um, I, I agree with what Liz said about, when we get details about financing on the John Street Tower, that would be very.
Oh, we're not, we, we will not be going through USDA because complications we'll have with that. It's gonna be probably a typical serial bond uh, for that, actually. So we're working with Carlos' firm to determine uh, first steps for that. We wanted to get through the seventy-eight Thompson Street stuff first, uh, with them. And the next steps are gonna be to look at our options with respect to financing for John Street Tower. Also, I'll be discussing this with uh, the revenue advisory board tomorrow night by their request. Uh, so I'll have uh, stuff I can uh, state more specifically to that. I think we're gonna beat it that horse right now. Uh, I could go through that now, and then again tomorrow, so we'll have that.
Um, and will that be in writing at some point, just in case we don't get to the meeting tomorrow?
There will be minutes. They've, they've been doing minutes, so.
But, okay, but this is such a big, big purchase.
I'm well aware it's a big, big purchase.
So which, there should be written out, not just in some minutes of a committee, but the actual.
That, 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 that board, just, just to eliminate confusion from earlier. That board is what, the, the board that's recommending with the rates to help pay for this ultimately. So ultimately, they're going to be presenting based on what our needs are, what the correct, or what they feel is the correct methodology in rate raising would be to get that money essentially coming.
But if you, they're gonna be.
So they're, you're gonna see it in some format.
Okay, but they're gonna be relying to some degree or great extent on data information you're providing to them. And that information would be helpful for this board to see, when you're providing to them.
We, we need, we need a million twelve thousand dollars. We'll be talking about the other two tanks and the maintenance. We're still actually pinning down some of the maintenance numbers for the other two tanks, so I don't have all the numbers you're looking for.
Right, right. When you have, right, be good. I, I, I'm not expecting to have it tomorrow, but when you have it, it would be good to have it on a piece of paper that we can share. It's public and all that, and uh, it sounds like the interest rate's gonna be significantly higher than.
No, we probably qualify the four range, is what I understand uh, from other municipalities locally that have done stuff like this. So.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion that the vouchers be audited and meeting adjourned at eight fifty-five PM? Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
I, I'll give it to trustee Raymond, he's got it out of his mouth. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Have a good night, everybody. See you in March.
March.